Great crowd tonight.
Can't see with these old glasses.
Is that the issue?
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the December 9, 2021 Xenia City Council meeting. At this time, we will have an invocation by Minister Richard Buford from First United Christian Church here in Xenia, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Cody Branham. At this time, I would ask everyone to please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the presence of everyone in this room and just bless this council meeting and each of its members and give them the grace and mercy to be able to take care of the affairs of this city, dear heavenly Father, and give them the wisdom to know the difference of what they need to do. Dear heavenly Father, what are their steps? Because we know that if they do everything for your glory, dear heavenly Father, that blessings will come down for our community. Guide them in whatever endeavors that they choose to do, because we know that as long as they do it for your will, everything will be okay. So we just ask that you continue to bless this council in all that they do for your glory. We ask all of this in your dear, holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Richard Buford. Thank you, Councilman Cody Branham. At this time, I call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Councilman Branham?
Here.
Councilman Herschel?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the November 23, 2021 regular meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written. So moved by Councilman Herschel. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion, corrections, additions on the minutes? All right. See none. Could I get a roll call to accept the minutes, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We have no special presentation scheduled for tonight's regular meeting. At this time, in the agenda is opportunity for audience comments. If anyone in the audience would care to come take the podium at this time, give us your name, address for the record, limit your comments three to four minutes. All right. Next on the agenda is opportunity for old business. Our first item is Ordinance 2021-22, a second reading. This is authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $3,350,000 worth of special obligation bond anticipation notes, Series 2022, a first renewal, for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring certain leasehold interest and matters related thereto. This was introduced by the Vice President at our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by the Vice President. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Herschel. Any discussion, questions, concerns regarding this ordinance? Any comments by staff? Nope. All right. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is Resolution 2021, Letter XX. This is also a second reading. This is providing for assessments to be levied and authorizing the Finance Director to certify those assessments with Green County Auditor. This was introduced by Councilman Branham on the November 23 regular meeting. I'd like to move for passage, President? Thank you. Move for passage by Councilman Branham. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Father.
Thank you. Seconded by the Vice President. Opportunities for comments or concerns. All right. See none. Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item under old business is Resolution 2021-Y. This is also a second reading. This is authorizing the renewal of the city's lease fleet program through Enterprise, their fleet management program through December of 2024. This was introduced by the mayor at our last regular meeting.
Thank you, sir. I'll move for passage.
Move for passage by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Herschel. Opportunity for comments or concerns.
I just want to thank Ryan and Jason and Jared for the response to this issue that I brought up. Basically, I was just checking to make sure that we've not inclined any penalties on some of our leased vehicles in the past that we've, you know, due to negligence or abuse from our employees, and there was none of that that's been fine, you know, found in the past. So just would like to thank them for that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Vice President?
Yes. Councilman Scrivens?
Also, just for the sake of the audience who don't have the paperwork, it's $45,000 we're spending over a four-year period, just so you know that. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. This is kind of regarding the subject, but shopping for cars is getting difficult. When I talked to a dealership actually today, it looks like a lot of 2022s are still on delay as well. How does that affect us?
Yeah, it may affect us. We are, we've gotten several vehicles from this year's program finally in. As we look forward into, with this program into 2022, while these large buyers like Enterprise probably will have some priority because they're a volume customer, we can make no guarantees as to exactly when we'll get these next round of fleet. So I think we'll continue to be impacted by that. We are, for example, this year with our Police Division Cruiser Replacements, we've been told essentially we're not getting those vehicles this year, as we discussed a couple meetings ago. So we're seeing it on the direct purchase end. We'll see it also on this lease end with Enterprise. We don't know for sure when we'll get it. But again, the program seems to be yielding financial benefits for the city, so it's worth pursuing it to the extent the fleet is available.
And I would just add that in, because of the shortage, it actually, assuming we can get the new fleet in, can benefit us on the back end because the used car market is booming at the moment. It drives those prices up, and so when we're reselling those vehicles used, it actually benefits us because we're able to sell them back at a higher rate.
Got it.
Spoken by a true financial analyst.
All right. Very good. Anyone else have anything to add to that? All right. Not seen any other comments. At this time, I'll ask for a motion, or I'm sorry, a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have no public hearing scheduled under the agenda for tonight. So our next item is new business. First one is Ordinance 2021-23. This is an introduction of retitling Part II, amending Title II of Part II, and retitling amended, and amending Title IV of Part II of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Xenia. Madam Law Director.
Good evening. I will, I've given you very detailed in the cover memo about the changes to each section, but I would like to give you this evening just a general overview of the changes that we're making for the public. This is the start of our rewrite of the codified ordinances. Most of the sections of our codified ordinances have not been updated since 1964. They were in desperate need of an update. So we've started here with Part II. We are recommending that this be titled City Government, as Part II is the section that deals with City Council, deals with the administration, the judiciary, the different branches of city government. Title II of Part II is titled General Provisions, and what that section deals with is just general rules of construction. There's a suggestion that we now call the Codified Ordinances, our Xenia City Code, what the effect of a reenactment and amendment of any sections of the code would be, how time is computed, how legislative intent. You will see if you reviewed that, there are a lot of statutory references to the Ohio Revised Code. A lot of what we have is based on the exact same rules of construction that they use at the state. So anywhere we based our language off the ORC section, I included a statutory reference there. Chapter 202 is Official Standards. This deals with the city flag, the city logo, the actual city seal, project atom, project atom used to be, and that's something that tells the surveyors what they're supposed to use when they come in. What we had on the books was they were to use a pin that was in the middle of Market Street, and nobody knows where that pin is, if there still is a pin there. So with the Engineering Department, we updated that language. 204 deals with public meetings, and we've added to this section a provision that addresses public records. Under state law, council is required to adopt by resolution a public records policy. So once this change, if council adopts it, goes into effect, we'll come back to you with that public records policy by resolution. The public meetings section basically applies to every decision-making body of the city. It addresses rules of public notice, how we notify the public of regular meetings, special meetings, emergency meetings. It also adds a new section that addresses the conduct of the public at meetings. For example, the public has a right under state law to attend any meeting. You do not necessarily have a right to be heard unless there's public hearing or audience comments. It addresses the issue of the public is allowed to record or videotape any meeting as long as they're not being disruptive. So that was something that we had not addressed before in our ordinances, so that's new and we're addressing that. Chapter 206 is miscellaneous. These are just some various provisions of powers granted to the city under the Ohio Revised Code that we've included in our codified ordinances. Then we get to Title II. That is currently titled Legislation. We are recommending that be retitled The Legislative Code. This title deals with City Council, Chapter 210, and a lot of what we've done here is simply renumber the sections, kind of trying to compress and keep all things together that go together. But 210 now deals with the oath of office. A lot of what you had done and that was in the ordinances was very old are now in your rules of council. So you will see that we deleted quite a bit from that, but it wasn't necessarily taken away. It's in your rules of council now. We deal with council meetings, compensation, expenses. We had in the ordinances, there already was a section on use of personal communication devices. However, that was never passed by council by ordinance. That was a resolution, so it should not have been codified. So this will actually establish that policy by ordinance. 212 then deals with ordinances, resolutions and motions, defining what the different, three different actions are, outlining in the process of how they get presented to council. We carried over publication and posting places. That's currently in our codified ordinances. Most of this is based on the language that's in our charter. We also, there also have determination of legis, there are ordinances that you as council pass that do not get codified. When, for example, when you established the ESID, the Energy Saving Improvement District, that was not codified. So there still needs to be something that talks about determination of legislative intent when you do pass ordinances that aren't necessarily going to be codified. Then 214, the new chapter, this was basically 208. This was your contract chapter, and really, the main thing that we did with this chapter was kind of shrink it down. We kept the preference system for resident businesses where that had currently been spread across three separate sections. We condensed it into one. I think the biggest change that we're suggesting here, and I will let the Legislative Review Committee members talk as soon as I'm done, but one thing that we're recommending, what the charter currently says, the current limit in the charter for expenses for competitive bidding, anything above this threshold, we have to competitively bid. Anything above this threshold, council has to approve. The current limit in the charter is $7,500. But the charter also states that council has the right by ordinance to increase that limit. In 2012, council did that almost 10 years ago. You increased that limit to $25,000. We are recommending that you increase that limit to 50. I've given you in the cover memo, the code sections, that is based on the limit that currently exists in state law. The threshold for villages is $50,000. The threshold for village administrators is $50,000. Threshold for public service, public safety, city hospitals, city Board of Park Commissioners is $50,000. So we're just recommending it be raised to match what's in the ORC. That's probably the biggest change that we're making in the contract section, and I will be quiet there. The Legislative Review Committee did review this. That committee consists of Mayor Mays, President Smith, and Councilman Scrivens. So I will happily turn it over to the committee if they have anything they would like to add.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. Councilman Scrivens, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the lone member on the committee, I want to congratulate the Law Director and her zeal in getting these codified ordinances roped in and make sense out of. We had a hodgepodge for 30, and now we have something that's workable and readable, and hopefully it'll be passed this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Mays?
You summed it up well. I don't think there was anything of no, I know that that 50,000 was talked about quite a while. We went round and round and asked, you know, for a lot of opinions, and especially from our appointed officials, if that, why that number and how that matched basically the standard practice. So we agree that it would be, it made sense to raise it at this time, especially even a lot of things that are more expensive now.
Yeah, thank you. And our meeting went about three hours, and I can't thank staff enough. City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, we're all there. And I know just that meeting, just three hours, you spent many hours of time preparing for that, so thank you so much. I think everything looks great, and I think it's needed, so thank you very much. So I think we'll have to start referring to Xenia City Code instead of codified ordinances.
Well, we set it up that we can call it either codified ordinances or Xenia City Code, so whichever phrase is used is fine.
It's still XCO regardless.
XCO, very good. All right. So, and anyone have any questions for us? All right.
Just one other thing, Mr. President, if I can. This points up the need, the dire need for us to update our charter. As you can see, from 2012, we had it at $7,500. The world has advanced triple times since 2012, and we need to play catch-up, and this is one of the ways that we can do that. And the charter is going to be presented just like this. We have to come forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. All right. If anyone no longer has any questions, at this time, I'll ask one of my colleagues to introduce.
I'll introduce.
Introduced by the mayor. Thank you. Our next item is Ordinance 2021-24. This is also an introduction. This is amending Section 274-07 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Xenia, Ohio, to add a classified position of Management Analyst, an IT position, and amending Section 260.03 to reallocate pay distributions for all IT department personnel for the accounts receivable manager. Mr. Finance Director, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Last month, city staff provided to City Council some information about the increased service demands on IT and technology services here at the city. The last time that there was a thorough review of the staffing in that department was 2014, and since that time, the demand on technology services has increased significantly. Nearly every, every metric that we evaluated had at least doubled since that time, whether that's the help tickets that are entered, the number of devices that they're supporting. But one of the major changes since that time is the amount of time that we're spending trying to make sure that our network is secure. And so one of the most significant changes since the last time we reviewed this is the prevalence of cyber attacks and people who are trying to find vulnerabilities in networks. And while we're obviously never going to completely eliminate that threat, we do our very best to spend a lot of time, effort and resources to make sure that our network is secure. I think we provided to council some numbers about the number of projects that are outstanding, the number of tasks that are rotating on a normal basis for IT, and there's a significant number of tasks that are backed up, and a lot of that is because there's just, there's more work to go around than there is people to do that work. So as we were evaluating how we could address some of those concerns and issues in the IT department, we found that a good, a good bit of time is being spent by our IT manager and some of the others in the IT department on some of the more administrative tasks, whether it's paying bills, managing inventory, it could be a whole variety of things, actually doing the purchasing of IT equipment, customer service to departments and the communication with those departments. There's a whole variety of things that are really more administrative in nature than they are technical. And so we believe that one of the ways that we could provide tremendous support to the IT department is to have a position who takes care of a lot of those administrative functions for them, and so that they can spend their time, specifically the IT manager can spend a lot of his time thinking more strategically about how we address a lot of these technical issues in the IT department, and then obviously spending his time on more of the technical issues where his expertise lies. So tonight, we're requesting, obviously, when we came to council and had some of this discussion a few weeks ago, it was really more of informational purposes. Tonight, we're coming actually requesting the council grant permission for us to fill that position, and in order for us to do that, we would need to actually add that position in Chapter 274, and then we'd also need to add pay distributions for that position in Chapter 260. While we're in 260.03 adjusting those distributions, we thought that it would be prudent to amend not only this particular position, but our IT department in the way that they're distributed more broadly. So right now, you have some different positions in IT that are distributed in slightly different ways. For the most part, they're distributed in a very similar fashion, but they're not exactly the same. But for the most part, it makes sense to just have the same distribution for all of those employees throughout that department. And distributing it in the way that we're recommending tonight, it will slightly ease the burden on the general fund for those services. So this position would be distributed in such a way, as with the rest of our IT department, it would be 32% to the general fund, 8% to the court fund, 15% to streets, 20% to water, 20 to sewer, and 5% to sanitation. And so we're recommending that distribution be allocated to each IT position. Also, in addition to that, we're requesting some changes to the AR manager position. When we made the change to Rita for tax collection, a change in some of the workload occurred for the IT manager, and so she's spending a whole lot more of her time on utility tasks than she is tax, tax issues. So there is still a tax component, there's some of her time being allocated there, but not nearly the time that was being allocated before. So we're recommending tonight that we also amend 260 to redistribute her wages so that most of it's being charged to water, sewer, sanitation, storm, those types of things instead of the general fund. And so that too is a change that will lessen the demand that's being placed on our general fund. That's the request and the recommendation is that we introduce ordinances this evening that would facilitate those changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the Finance Director tonight?
Well, if the, Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
If these functions, these eight functions that I think that you enumerated part of the job description, if these are all being done now by the IT manager, no wonder we're running behind the curve. So this is a good redistribution of the workload, and for the price, I think it's, I think we coming in under, under budget.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. See none. Who would care to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. That was Councilman Scrivens. Wish I would to get that. Okay, thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2021 AAA titled Emergency. This is authorizing the purchase of a cooling unit for the Xenia Green Central Communications Center at a cost not to exceed $57,000 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, sir. It's detailed in your agenda report. The dispatch center's computer hardware space is currently cooled by a split, cooled by a split unit system. Those cooling units are five and, excuse me, seven in 15 years respectively. We've actually been encountering consistent problems with these units, and I say consistent, every few weeks or a couple of months, we've had problems for the past probably two years. And ironically, it's the, it's the newer unit that has given us more issues. Maintaining temperature in that space, a consistent temperature within the guidelines of the manufacturer of that, of those systems is extremely important for the longevity of the equipment and the functionality of that equipment. So we're very sensitive to that and want to make sure that we're not seeing a cooling unit failure that leads to a system failure for that critical equipment. Given the critical nature of the services involved with this and the lack of confidence that we have in these systems, given the experience that we've had with their reliability, we think it's necessary to move forward at this time with a planned cooling system replacement rather than waiting until they just die, which would be a real problem. Our public service staff, which oversees our facility operations or HVAC functions, has received a quote from Graybar to replace the existing units with one redundant unit produced by Liebert. This would, this project would include new supply and return piping that will regulate the temperature of that dispatch center computer hardware system. The city has experience with these Liebert units. We've been very pleased with the functionality of them, so we're confident in that particular product. We are this evening requesting the council authorize as an emergency the approval of resolution to move forward with this cooling system replacement as quoted by Graybar at not to exceed amount of $57,325.59. And again, we're seeking the emergency passage as requested in the, in the materials in order to expedite this. Some concerns about how long it might take to acquire these, to get them installed, and given the lack of reliability of the systems, we would, we would prefer to expedite this as much as possible. Certainly answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for City Manager regarding this emergency?
Mr. President? Just one question, Mr. President. So we have two units now, and one we run and one we're having as a redundant backup, or do we alternate them?
It really takes both units to cool the whole space.
We alternate back and forth?
Yeah. It takes both units to maintain.
Okay, so they're both kind of equal wear?
Yeah. And, and I don't know all the functionality, I'm certainly not an HVAC expert, but there are some redundant systems within the one singular unit that we would be replacing with.
Yeah, we, we can't afford that to go out with all priority.
Yeah. And again, given the problems that we've had that have, have taken a toll on some of the hardware in the past, it's just expenses that we can avoid by being proactive here.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Brent, does this fall under the capital, equipment maintenance or improvements that is covered under the dispatch agreement then?
Yeah, it's under the threshold that we have to get there concurrents, but.
Okay. So cost sharing will occur on that?
Yeah. If the county pay half, we pay half.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Who would like to make the resolution as an emergency, authorizing the purchase of the cooling unit?
I'll move.
Okay. And second, okay, moved by Councilman Herschel, seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Any further discussion? Okay. Get a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item, Item 4, titled Resolution 2021 AAA is also an introduction tonight. This is authorizing the execution of the consolidated dispatch agreement and an associated MOU with the Green County Board of Commissioners for a continued operation of the Xenia Green Central Communications Center. Mr. Mayorman.
Thank you, sir. Our council's direction staff has been engaged in negotiations with leadership on behalf of the Green County Commission to renegotiate provisions of the partnership agreement for the Xenia Green Central Communications Center. This has included efforts to resolve underpayment issues that have lingered for about two years. Through the efforts of our law department, the law department and our office with our counterparts on the county side, we've arrived at what we deem as an acceptable replacement contract at this juncture. While not perfect, this replacement contract and the accompanying MOU do represent a reasonable way forward for our partnership in which we can finally seek some reimbursement for expenses that we've incurred over the past couple of years and be made mostly whole for that. It also offers an opportunity for the city to begin collecting expenses related to overhead that we have not charged back to this operation in the past, and as council's aware through the materials we've provided, that's, it's a pretty significant number. So we appreciate those changes or those reconciliations with this. The new contract would also fix some existing structural concerns that the law director identified in the current contract. This replacement agreement would also provide for more specific procedures related to our budgeting process as well as dealing with unforeseen operating expenses and dispute resolutions. So again, some enhancements to this arrangement. The partnership approach to providing these 911 services, I think, has been a benefit without question and a value to both the county and the city and the constituents we serve. So I think there's concurrence generally that we want to continue to do this, in fact that we want to move toward broader consolidation countywide, which should be a continuing priority as well. We believe that it's important to authorize the execution of this replacement contract, and then in the coming year, continue to pursue that conversation on further consolidation, continue to look at ensuring there's equity among all those partners that are participating in the service benefit of our dispatch services. And we've got projects, as we've discussed with council, related to our next gen 911 system and so forth. So there's a lot coming up that needs to be worked through with our dispatch service delivery. And this contract will allow some stability in continuing these services while we look at what the long-term future of these operations needs to be to make sure that we're providing the most efficient service we can. And given the nature of what this is and the importance of it for public safety, this would provide some continuity. So again, staff's recommending introduction this evening of a resolution to authorize a contract extension, certainly answer any questions. Also, I want to give a shout out to our law director. This was a pretty arduous process to work through this. She was working with her counterparts in the county prosecutor's office, and they're anything but experts in this, so they would have to go back to the county administrator, and Jeanette would come back to me, and we kind of went back and forth, which is part of the reason I think this was extended so long. But again, I want to thank Jeanette for her efforts with this as well.
All right, thank you. At this time, any questions for the City Manager regarding either the agreement or the MOU?
Nice one. I mean, you focus on getting the MOU set up for the payments as well as Jeanette addressing a number of the ambiguities that we talked about, you know, in terms of the existing contracts. I think a number of those things that we discussed are going to be resolved and will help us facilitate better coordination with the county.
You, we had been operating under the same agreement for 32 years.
Right, right.
It had never been updated, so it was time to make some changes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
The thing that I like most about the new proposed contract is the key word equity and cost. Equity and cost. We've been bearing the lion's share of this cost, and we're not shifting the cost, we're just asking everybody to pay their fair share.
Mr. President, I would add, I think there's some additional work to be done there. Without question, there are smaller entities in our service provision area that are still not contributing to this service, and they fall under historic county arrangement for the services. This is much better for us and our bottom line because we're recouping some of these costs that we've been incurring without reimbursement, now recouping some of that from the county. But as you look at the cost of providing services for dispatch 911, whether it's in our jurisdiction or for Beaver, Good, or Fairborn, we're bearing those costs. And many of the smaller outlined jurisdictions are not bearing any of that burden. And so, I think that is an area of conversation that we should be pursuing with the county next year, that there ought to be some equity. And I think another thing for us to consider is, there really should be a partnership agreement with any entity that is participating in these services where they're agreeing to abide by our standards, follow our protocol, and to some extent, they're providing some compensation. And that is definitely a conversation that in partnership with our friends at the county that we should be pursuing with some of these smaller jurisdictions next year.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So I know, Madam Law Director, we talked a little bit about this on the phone yesterday. So how will the reimbursement take place? Is that a quarterly billing? Is that annually billing? Or will that be monthly billing?
The reimbursement under the MOU for a year, after talking with my counterpart at the county prosecutor's office, the payment date for that will be December 31st. Moving forward, the payments, we kind of kept the payments that, monthly, the same as they had been under the passage agreement.
Okay, cool.
So the county, basically the Finance Director sends them a bill for the prior month.
Okay.
It always does go a month.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll bill them for the previous month.
All right, thank you.
That and the last were small unmarked bills, as you call it.
Well, you'll let us know if that goes awry. Is that correct? Thank you. All right, very good. Anyone else have any questions for either the law director or the City Manager? And thank you for the work that you put together on this. At this time, I'll ask one of my colleagues for an introduction. I'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Herschel. Thank you. Our next item, Item 5, is an administrative motion appointing Mr. Ethan Reynolds to the Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities. Mr. Reynolds, thank you for being here tonight. Xenia codified ordinance, Chapter 278, stipulates the City Council to appoint five residents of the city and one ex officio non-voting member to the Board of Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities. There is one vacancy currently on BRCA for a voting position, and in response to that vacancy, Mr. Ethan Reynolds has expressed his interest in serving on BRCA, and I have spoke with him as well. And tonight, we are here to recommend that council appoint Mr. Ethan Reynolds to fill the vacancy to serve as a voting member of BRCA with the term expiring July 31st of 2024. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Herschel. Any discussion, questions?
I'd just like to commend Ethan, he's got a ton of great ideas for us for community activities and community involvement, and Ethan came out to the Christmas of the station and was just part of distributing the Christmas stockings to the kids and the families, and it was just good to see him there, taking a lot of joy in that. And it was a long night, too, and he stuck with it the whole time, and just, so I'm glad he's already participating and looking forward to stepping forward a lot of the ideas that he's got, too.
All right, I would echo that. Thank you very much. It was a great time working with you last Friday, and it was a lot of fun.
I'd just like to congratulate you on the recommendation to appoint Mr. Reynolds. I find him to be very competent and very compassionate about the city of Xenia. He's a relatively new acquisition for us, and we're going to work with him, and we're going to see him grow and develop, just like the rest of us here. So, thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, and again, you've attended a lot of council meetings this year, and that presence is noted, and thank you so much. And even before his appointment, he's already started helping us, so thank you very much. Our next big activity for BRCA will be Easter, so we'll look forward to having you for that. And our first meeting will be, next meeting will be March. So thank you very much. At this time, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is an administrative motion. This is approving the schedule of bills tonight in the amount of $212,000. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to note on the bills this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke tonight? Can I get a motion to pay the bills, please?
So moves.
By Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branum. All right. If no one has any comments or questions, we'll go for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Branum?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is opportunity for appointed officials to report. At this time, I'll start with Mr. Duke.
I have nothing else this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke regarding money? No? All right, thank you.
I just, I just want to commend you on the latest financial report, and I know there's a lot of instability in terms of comparisons on income with going to Rita and the CARES Act and the types of finances, but you did a very good job of giving us an update and understanding of that, so just thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Law Director?
I have a few things this evening. First of all, I wanted to inform council, we received notice, if you remember the One Ohio Participation Agreement that council approved, there was also a lawsuit filed against Johnson and Johnson as a distributor. They have offered to settle the suit against them through the One Ohio Participation Program. As council had already approved that participation agreement, I did go ahead and submit for the city. I have not seen any numbers yet of what we could potentially get, but anything that comes through that's opioid litigation that we can recoup for some of our costs, I will pursue that. Second, I just want to inform council that we, again, working with the county, we are renewing the Prosecution Services Contract. We did a little over a 3% increase. We, again, we run about a year behind, but based on the distribution of the caseload. So appreciate the county working with us on that to renew that agreement. Lastly, I put in front of you this evening, I did warn you this was coming, I would like to have a conversation about the charter amendment. We did table the discussion. I have given you a breakdown, there are three elections next year. There's the May 3 primary, there's an August 2 special election, and then the November 8 general election. We have a window of, the legis, if you want to do charter amendments as council, you have to pass an ordinance. That ordinance needs to become effective, there's a window of time, 120 days before the election to 60 days before the election. So when you see the language there where I have window, January 3 to March 4, that's the 120 to 60 day period that the ordinance needs to become effective in. So based on those timelines and knowing that's when an ordinance would have to be effective, I've given you a breakdown. If we did it by regular process, regular process, I mean first reading, second reading, and then 30 days before it becomes effective. I also gave you the dates that you would be able to do it by an emergency ordinance. Now, I will tell you, any ordinance, whether it's done by regular process or emergency under the Ohio Constitution, requires a vote of five council members. So if council wanted to do them as an emergency, it's still five, just the same as it would be if we go regular process, it will have to be five as well for that. So this is the breakdown for dates. The last discussion that we had had, we had discussed breaking the, breaking this down really into three sections. So that's what I proposed here. I do think that's a smart way to do it. It gives us a better chance of getting into the weeds with our residents rather than throwing everything at them at once if we're giving them three, and you'll see most of this, it's really three sections, three sections per ballot item. Because some of the other ones where I've suggested five, two of the articles are actually getting repealed because the little bit that was in those articles was moved to other articles. So each one of these ballot items would be three articles. I think that's easier for the public to digest. Again, that's just my suggestion, it's council's decision how you want to do this. I do bring this up, however, because as you can see from the deadlines, if we were going to try and put something on the May 3 primary ballot, our last date to do it by regular process would be introduction at your first meeting in January. You could do emergency at either of your February meeting, but if you wanted to do, but we, we're getting close to that kind of timeline. So I did kind of want you to have that discussion tonight. Is it something that you want me to bring back to you? And what we had discussed was Article 5, which is the legislation article, Article 8, which is boards and commissions, and then Article 10, which is the human resource system. And if council is amenable to putting those amendments, it would be one ballot item, all three on one ballot item. I will prepare the ordinance, and we can bring it back to you either at your last meeting in December or your first meeting in January, whichever council would prefer.
Go ahead and get out.
Okay, open for discussion. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to get out in front on the whole thing and do this at our next meeting.
I would concur. Any other questions?
It would be our next meeting, it would be our second meeting, right? Because we got a meeting.
December 29 meeting.
Well, you could do it at, you could introduce it at your meeting on the 29th and vote on the 13th if you wanted. The latest we could have an introduction by regular process is that first meeting in January.
Do you have the time to have it ready by the 29th? I'm sorry. Do you have the time to have it ready by the 29th?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with that.
That was my only concern.
Sure. No, and we're talking about these first, the 5, 8, and 10?
Right.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Also, Mr. President, I like the way we have it broken down into the good parts, and it's easier to sell, and it's easier to digest, and it's easier to learn what's going on.
All right, very good. So it looks like though we will have, you have an introduction for the August 2 special meeting as early as February? Is that correct?
Yeah, again, that's, the window for the August meeting is, I think I have those, maybe I have the wrong dates. My window was April to June. You could do it as early as February, that'd be your 120 days before is April 4.
So Jeanette, would we have, I believe, but tell me if I'm correct, I believe we would have time to see the results of the May 3 primary before we would have to authorize the second grouping here, right?
The ordinance would have to be effective. The effective date would have to fall between January 3 and March 4.
He's saying, does that make sense?
If we did it as emergency, we could do it after the date of the May primary.
To see if that first, those first three passed.
For the August 2, yes, you could do it as emergency in May.
And I'm also assuming that those three are intertwined and dependent upon the first being approved. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I tried to group them as we had discussed before, these ballot items.
No, I understand, I understand the first three are not dependent on the others, but I think we probably, right, okay. But I think there were some dependencies on the, on the others of the previous ones, so we'd want to see whether that had passed.
Yes. The finance, the finance section, city council, and general provisions were pretty intertwined, as were city management and administrative departments, those were pretty intertwined.
Right.
So those were kind of important to keep together.
Sure.
I don't think any of the ones from this August 2 was intertwined with the May 3s, correct? I think that's where you were getting that, right?
Right. I think there was, but anyways, I'll go back and look and see.
Well, if, if those three are on the May 3 and don't pass, you could put them on again on August 2.
Right, we could also reintroduce.
You would have to do it as an emergency on May 12 through the 26th, but you could do that.
Okay. Good, yes, in which case we probably could, yeah. We'd have some discussions on that.
Very good. Sounds like we're in agreement. Yeah, Councilman, I'm sorry, Vice President Dean?
Yeah, I was fine with doing it as early as possible.
And I did go ahead and leave Articles 11 and 12, Article 11 with the election section. I know there were a lot of concerns with that section. I did go ahead and leave that completely out. That's something I think. That's something I think your next Charter Commission could revisit.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything, anyone have anything else for the law director other than the charter amendment? All right, thank you very much.
I will plan on having that on your agenda for the 29th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else for us?
I'm sorry?
Anything else for us?
No, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas as well. City Manager, Mr. Brent Merriman, you're up.
Thank you, Senator Adams, this evening. First, I want to remind our public that pursuant to our holiday calendar, we will be closed, our administrative functions closed on December 23rd and 24th. This is our last meeting before then, so an observance of the Christmas holiday. We'll also be closed on the 30th and 31st for the New Year's holiday. So we ask folks to, if you have any business here at the C A B or with other administrative functions, that you be sure to take care of that ahead of those closures. We have encountered a bit of a cold snap. We're about to get 60 degree temperatures and then the temperatures are going to swing back to 30 degrees. So please be weather aware. There's some chances for severe weather Friday evening into Saturday. That makes for a good segue for me to remind folks that we're at that time of year where we do see a lot of water main breaks. We're an old city with a lot of old water infrastructure. So we ask the folks in the public to be aware that that can occur with these types of rapid temperature swings. So I would put my bottom dollar on the fact that we'll have at least a couple of water main breaks this weekend. We encourage folks that if you happen to see your water pressure rapidly drop, if you happen to see ponding water or a lot of running water in the street when we've not had precipitation, those are good indications this time of year that we are experiencing a subsurface problem. So we encourage you to contact the city if you suspect there might be an issue. We'll take a look at that. It's after hours, you can feel free to call our dispatch center. So again, just encourage folks to be aware of that and help us monitor those things so that when you contact us, we have the ability to address those as quickly as possible. Next, I did want to give a huge shout out to all the volunteer folks, Braca folks, to Ryan Baker and Christina Schaefer and our staff and others who spent a lot of time and effort putting together our first annual Christmas at the station event. Last weekend, we had a very, very robust community turnout. For the most part, a lot of positive comments, a lot of thanks and gratitude. I was discussing with the council president before the meeting tonight that there were some complaints, but it was more that there wasn't enough, that it only went one day instead of a couple. So we'll evaluate where we take that program moving forward, but we deem it as a pretty nice success. The line for Santa was extraordinarily long, but that's a, that's a great problem to have. So again, thanks to all those who helped make that event possible and also especially to those local businesses that provided sponsorships and opened their spaces as well. I am drafting or finalizing an update memo for council. This will be a lengthy memo. It's been a little while since I've provided an update on a lot of our policy issues and projects. So I'll publish that for council before the Christmas break and look for updates on a whole host of topics and issues. Finally, we are, have been assembling a list of potential topics for council's priority retreat in January. I'll be getting with the law director and finance director to finalize some recommendations on what we think would be important to cover in that meeting. Once council has its reorganization in January and we establish your new leadership, we'll get that agenda finalized, but we are scheduled for January 15. So please make sure that your calendars are marked and we look forward to a pretty robust discussion that day. So that is all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Anyone have anything else for our city manager tonight? All right, I guess you're off the hook. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, reports of boards, commissions, and committees. Our first is Planning and Zoning Commission, Councilman Branum.
Planning and zoning commission was canceled due to lack of agenda items.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone have anything for Councilman Branum tonight regarding planning and zoning? All right, next is Board for Recreation, Arts, and Cultural Activities. Our meeting for Monday was canceled. Our next meeting will be scheduled for March. I too would like to thank the numerous volunteers that we had, December 3 for Christmas Station. I'd like to thank Greg Paxton. I'd like to thank Nelson King, Ethan Reynolds, Tom McCarthy from Braca for their volunteer at the Santa House. Also thank staff Christine, Christina Schaefer and Ryan Baker for the tremendous job that they did. Also, public service. I mean, within an hour, we were cleaning the city up and pulling things off the street. I mean, I drove by at 9:45 and you couldn't tell we had a festival. It was great. Also like to thank the staff, the volunteers from Bridges of Hope that have helped clean up both prior to and after the event. And Councilman Urschel for all your help on that. And I am so sorry, what's Jennifer's last name from, pardon?
Or maybe?
Yeah.
Jennifer Dunn.
Jennifer Dunn, that's correct. She had volunteers there as well, with characters, people walking around. We had volunteers from Yellow Springs, we had volunteers from St. Bridget, Xenia High School, Honor Society. And I know I'm going to miss somebody tonight, I apologize. But I know Xenia Church of Christ from Country Club Drive. They were there doing crafts and ornaments, giving away hot cider free of charge. The key word on this event was free. A lot of things were free. But somebody has paid for that and I just can't thank the city enough for stepping up to the plate. This was an activity that was normally held in the past at James Ranch Park by Green County Parks and Trails. This is not to be confused, this was a city event. So that's why it was one night. And it is dependent on the weather. If we would have had a rain out, then we would have had very small crowds. So just a combination, I think, of people this last Christmas because of the pandemic, hadn't had an opportunity to see Santa, wonderful weather, well advertised event, lots of things to do. Just a culmination of the perfect storm to have a great crowd. So everyone, thank you very much. Also like to thank Home Church for the music that they did as well as all the food vendors that we had downtown. So next is opportunity for council comments. I'll start on my right with Councilman Branum.
Yeah, just a couple of things here. Just wanted to thank Public Service Department. They've been hard at it with collecting leaves around our city. Also, they had their first little touch of snow events. And I know that I've seen some trucks drive by, so they were pre-treating the roads and I think hitting the bridges and main roadways. I would also like to thank some different Christmas displays that we've had going on. Green County Parks and Trails with Caesar Ford Park, they've done a really good job at promoting a really nice drive-through Christmas light display. I'd like to thank Chief Parsons and Cider Services for Xenia Lights. That's an awesome event uptown at Shawnee Park. And also I found this little gym over on Belloc Avenue, Lower Belloc, right, right down from Colorado. They put up a really nice light display as well, tuned to music, which was pretty nice. Also, I would like to thank everybody that contributed to the Christmas station. And then also would like to congratulate Ms. Foster. And I wore my Xenia Green County Communications shirt on her behalf of promoting 30 years. And that's probably just a way for me to be lazy and my dress up. So I appreciate that and that's all I got to ask. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Great, thank you, Councilman Branum. Next would be Councilman Urschel.
Next, first I'd like to, the folks at Faith United Methodist had a Blue Christmas service on December 3. And there's just a lot of folks that are grieving this year. Loss of family members, loss of relationships, many times just a loss of jobs or income, those type of things. And on December 3, they just did an amazing job of hosting a service for folks that are grieving and have some time to grieve together, but also to have some hope as well, too. So I think Pastor Andy Spencer and his group up there, and they opened that up to the community and it's just done extremely well. So just want to thank you for them willing to step up and do that each year. The Christmas at the Station, that was just a home run. I mean, it was, it was amazing, you know, and you're right. The problem this year was we almost had too many people. And what a good problem to have, you know. It was, it was amazing to see Santa Claus show up at his, at his place with the escort from the Xenia Police, you know, at 4:30 and the line was already way down the park at that point. The carriage rides were tremendous. We had the two carriage, horse drawn. And we said, carriages, actually they're horse drawn wagons with 12 folks. And even, they turned pretty quickly, but the line for the wagon rides was around the courthouse for the whole evening. And the food vendors, folks, there was a line there for every one of the food vendors for pretty much all of the night. And kudos to the community businesses that stayed open that evening. And I think there was, there was good participation, folks getting a chance to see the local businesses there. I heard the flour bakery ran out of their, all their baked items around 7 o'clock. Literally, they were, they were fully sold out at that point. So just, just an amazing thing. So I just, I really thank the staff for stepping up, you know, for that. We had the Xenia High School choir group came in at 6 o'clock and while the, while the families were waiting there in line to see Santa, they performed their form. And Chaz's group from Home Church, it was a group of young men and women from Cedarville University that basically had Christmas concerts that they were performing. And they came and set up and performed that through the whole evening there. And it was just there next to the Montgomery Insurance Building. And that was just tremendous as well, too. I want to thank Greg Barnett. He allowed the Church Association to put our nativity scene out in front of his building. And they're doing a tremendous job of remodeling for that. That's the old SS Kreske building downtown. And we asked him if we could keep that nativity scene up and for a couple more days. And he said, great. And the next day, we had this tremendous windstorm, was blowing those things down. And his guys brought that inside their building and set it up inside their windows there. And so take a look at that on South Detroit Street, they've done it. And they said, hey, we've adopted the nativity scene, we're going to keep it there till after Christmas. So I'm not going to argue with them. I think that's a great place for us to have that in the, in the city. I think, just to thank you too for the businesses that are participating in the Elf on the Shelf contest this year. And do we know what the final date is for the, for families to turn those bingo cards in for that?
I do not, I'll check for you.
Check for me on that. I know that in the past, we had up until the 15th or so for the drawing on that, but.
21st.
21st, okay.
I believe that's correct.
21st, great. Yeah, you were passed out hundreds of, right, yeah. So anyways, if you have, if your family hasn't picked up one of those things, I would encourage you, you stop downstairs in the front lobby, get a, get a card. And it's a lot of fun to go through the businesses. My wife and I did that, looking for them that Friday night. And the business owners, there's about 12 of them, the small business owner here in town have placed them. And there's going to be a tremendous prize basket for the, for a boy and a girl coming out of that. And all the items in the, in the basket are going to be purchased from our Downtown Business Association folks as well, too, just to represent the downtown area. I'd also like to thank the Church Association for purchasing all the items for the Christmas stockings that were passed out at the, at the Santa House and for getting all those put together. And I, I know we prepared 360. The only, the only limitation was the number of kids that actually could see Santa at that point. But it was just, it was just a great opportunity to participate with that, too. And then I, and I do want to say, I really appreciate the guests at Bridges of Hope that came out and worked really hard to get the, the area down at the bike hub prepared. They were down there for eight workdays. Prior to that, they, they applied over 50 gallons of paint to some areas that were in desperate need where there's a lot of graffiti and some other things. And that, that paint was also provided by the shelter. They picked up over, cut down and picked up over 10 wagon loads of brush down at the, down at the bike hub and really cleared that out so we could see the lights there. And they picked up about three dumpster loads of trash from around that area as well, too. Yeah, so they, just, and I'll tell you, through that time, our city maintenance workers were in there working as well. And it was just good to see our maintenance workers and the, and the guests from the shelter working well together and both taking pride. And I'll tell you, kudos to the maintenance workers down there. Those guys worked tremendously hard. And if you haven't been down there, you just need to go take a walk from the E V building down to the bike hub because it's a good, safe, beautiful place to walk through. Especially with the lights and stuff now, it's just a good thing. I'd also like to thank the fire department for rescuing me after I injured myself while I was down there working and took a pretty hard shot to the eye while we were cutting down some of the brush there. And they responded very quickly and made sure my, my eye was stabilized and got me over to the, to the hospital and stuff. And so I didn't get to see any of the folks who were transporting me because I, they, I literally could not see anything during that time, but I could hear them. And they took great care, so.
How many fingers are my?
That's right. Less than, less than six and more than one, I hope, that's right. So anyways, anyways, thank you so much for them and their care and concern as well, too. And then we also, I just also want to say, we had a great forum last night hosted by Family Promise, which is one of the family shelters here in town. Used to be known as I H N, Interfaith Hospitality Network. It's now Family Promise of Green County. And they invited all of the folks who were participating in coming alongside of Prevention for Homelessness and assistance with homeless individuals and families. And then looking for folks who are coming out of the shelters to have a secure living environment. And we had participation by about eight different organizations last night. And I'll tell you, it was just a tremendous time to sit down and not complain, but talk about what are each the strengths of the different organizations there and how can we complement each other and come alongside and assist each other. And it was just, just a wonderful time of folks that are, that are concerned to see folks succeed in our city and to prosper in our city as well, too. So more to come from that. That group, part of the decision they made was to also look at partnering with United Way, which has a new initiative that they're kicking off in January called the Strong Families Initiative, which is primarily targeted at helping families not go into homelessness that are at risk. And it was a good decision at that point to get those eight organizations to partner with United Way. United Way's done a great job of setting up a partnership with 12 county agencies at this point. And I think coming out of these two forums, we're going to see some just amazing things come, come to fruition here in the springtime as we get about 20 different organizations collaborating well with each other. So anyways, kudos, kudos to all those folks and the work that they've done as well, too. And once again, Merry Christmas. I encourage everyone, I know this is a, this is a, is a great time for decorations and purchasing items and doing those type of things. I just encourage you to take some time, step back, take a breath, and just be at awe of our Creator. If you have a chance, go outside, look up in the skies, see the moon and the stars and remember those things were placed there as a reminder of the fact that we do have someone who is constantly watching us and participating in our lives and has comfort for us as well, too. So, thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilman Urschel, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
First want to compliment Councilman Urschel on his initiative. That man is unstoppable. We just love what you do in terms of helping the least of these. Because what you do to the least of these, you know what you do to Christ. So thank you, sir, for what you do for people who don't have a voice. Mr. President, just wanted to say that I wasn't able to participate in the Christmas at the Station this year. Xenia High School was having their annual Benner Fieldhouse Classic where they had basketball all day long on Friday and all evening. So I'm kind of a basketball nut, so I was there representing the council at the games. So we want to thank the Councilman Urschel and the mayor and you, Mr. President, for participating in the Christmas at the Station. And of course, the staff did an excellent job. We hatched an egg and it grew into a beautiful thing. And next year, it's going to be better. Want to also thank the Finance Director. Every month, he puts out a report with numbers in it. Not a lot of words, but numbers. He's got to figure them numbers out. And I have to give him, I mean, we're doing well in a pandemic. And I just want to say thanks, sir, for what you do. You make every penny in Xenia count. And I want everybody to know that. Bottom line is, you make it happen. And I want to thank you for that. Also want to give a shout out to our Law Director. She works tirelessly, tirelessly to make things happen for us. And we get it at the table in a form on one sheet. And I know it's a lot more than one sheet. And we thank you for that. So now I'll tell you our elected, I mean, our appointed representatives, excuse me a second. For, forego or forewent a salary increase last year. And they've outperformed their salary this year. this year. So when it comes time for an increase in our appointed officials, I'll be the first one to vote yes. So they've done a bang-up job this year. The city law director always sends us out things to do and you see, every day, she's got everything to do. I don't see how she does it. And when we have time, we're going to put forth a resolution to add a staff member to her department. Her department is short-staffed and it's overworked and we see that and it won't go unnoticed. So we'll be proposing an assistant law director position next year and we want to see how we can work that out in the budget with all of these monies that we've come about that we won't put on the streets. We'll put 99% of it on the streets, but we need to increase our capacity in the law department. We want to say our final goodbyes and farewell to Mr. Greenwood Harding, had his funeral last week over at your church, Council President, the First Church of Christ there on Lebeda Road and the place was filling up and you have a very nice edifice there, want to compliment you there. And just in final, our leaf collection program, the first round seems to be going pretty good. I see quite a lot of our residents haven't gotten around to raking leaves. These leaves, they're yours and until you rake them up, they'll wash down into the city storm drain and guess what happens after that? So just asking everybody, take pride in Xenia. This is someplace special. Finally, Mr. President, saying a encore farewell to Reverend Dr. Ed Gray Wallace, who succumbed last year in December to the COVID-19. And I called him, I teased him, I called him my right-hand man and I know he's looking down on us, making sure that we dot every i and cross every t and show some hospitality. And it just warms my heart to know that each person on this council and each appointed official, they exuded capacity for love and they love what they do, they love our city and of course, they love the people here and it's the people that makes this place what it is. And I say it before and I'll say it again, Xenia is someplace special and you have to treat it like that and treat the people like that and God bless us and He's blessing us as we live and breathe right now. I want to thank Reverend Beaufort for his words this evening. Reverend Beaufort, won't tell you in public, but he's my classmate and he was always smarter than me in school, so got to keep my eye on him, he's going places. But with that, Mr. President, want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. We'll have one more time to wish you guys a happy holiday season, but Christmas is in the offing and we have to remember the reason why we celebrate Christmas. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Mayor Mays.
It was December 2nd, one year ago Edgar passed and I reached out to Joyce and said there's been a handful of specific moments in the city over the last year that I missed speaking to him and asking his wisdom on several things, so he is missed. I won't go through all of the Christmas at the Station, but just to reiterate much of what everybody has said, how wonderful it was, we were there just to enjoy it. I brought my kids, my husband, we walked around town and we just had an amazing time. The kids loved it and thank you. Everybody's been mentioned. The only person I wanted to add in was Bob Collinor from A Main Baptist. He sat right next to Shoe and Leather in the little vestibule of Courthouse Coffee and just, he played the keyboard and sang carols and I just really appreciated him being there. You could hear him while we were standing in line freezing waiting for our carriage ride, but really appreciated that. And also the windows, several of the businesses that took the time to really decorate their windows, they were a lot of fun to look at, so. Really, the only thing, a couple of things on my schedule, yesterday I was at Cedarville University to do a podcast about Cedarville stories and it was a lot of fun to talk about just my alma mater, but also involvement in the city and what it's been like to be reelected and just some hopes and excitements for the next four years. Today, went to, of course, Ms. Foster's 30 years retirement party and as I read her proclamation and listing out some of the events that she has been through over these 30 years and really thinking, wow, she was there answering those calls, 911 calls during this event and this event and just very thankful for her service and her steadiness and her faithfulness. It was an honor to be there today. Tomorrow, for those who are able, Hope Hub out at the Emerged Project is receiving a huge donation from the 100 Women of Green County. It'll be at 2:15 and Semple has asked if anybody wants to come out and to celebrate that with them. She would love to have a crowd there to celebrate and to educate more people about what's going to go on there at the Hope Hub. So that's tomorrow at 2:15. And I'll just close with saying as well, Merry Christmas and I hope that people take time to go to church this Christmas. We have a plethora of churches here in Xenia and there are a lot of services, there's Christmas Eve services, our church is having a Christmas Eve service. It's just a great opportunity to go with your family and to take a breath, to be reminded of why we are celebrating Christmas. So I would really encourage everyone to take time this Christmas and that Christmas Sunday, go to church, enjoy a Sunday with your family there. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everyone and happy holidays. That's all I have to add, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. A couple of things, I'll make note. Some questions have been asked about where kids can play basketball this winter. Prior to last year, due to COVID, city suspended the basketball program with the rec league. Thank you to Xenia YMCA, who has really taken up the cross for that. I believe they're still accepting registrations for that. I know there's no upwards this year in Xenia, so I think the YMCA is just about it. So thank you to the Y and to Alan and his staff for putting that together. I think there's close to 400 kids that are already registered for that. They're partnering with Xenia Community Schools to use the gyms for that. Yeah. Also, I was asked to mention, there is a Christmas concert, sorry, I'm not on my phone to play. There is a Christmas concert by the Community Christmas Concert Band. That's going to be on Sunday, December 12th at 3 o'clock at Faith Community, United Methodist Church on Country Club Drive. The band's under the direction of Glenn Shaw. There's no admission charge, but they will accept your donation. So again, 3 o'clock, December 12th at Faith Community. And also, today I was on the, listening to the radio and an ad came out, it was really cool, from Vintage Toys right here in Xenia, so kudos to them. Very professional sounding commercial and I wish them a lot of success. Besides just vintage toys, they have like modern toys. So if you can support, vote, definitely spend your dollars here in the city, go local if you can. And other than thanking the Xenia City Staff for all the work that they do and all my colleagues here, on behalf of Xenia City Council, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to those that are watching. And this time, I will mention, we have no executive session scheduled for tonight, we have no work session scheduled. And before we do an adjournment, reminder, our next council meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, is Wednesday, December 29th at 5, not 6. So 5 o'clock here at City Administration Building, 5 o'clock, that is open to the public. And so now, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, Wednesday, the 29th, we'll have to swear people who have reelected the council.
That is correct, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. We will do the swearing in of the reelected members of council and the mayor at that meeting. So that's actually going to happen, that meeting, probably at the end of the meeting, right?
Yes, we can do it at 10.
And then, so they'll be, everyone will be sworn in moving forward through the holidays. So then our next regular meeting will be in January on the 13th. That will be a 6 o'clock meeting, where we'll do the reorganization as well at that time. So, okay, anyone else have anything to add? Thanks for throwing that out there. Okay, motion to adjourn.
I made a mistake and I meant to excuse Rebecca at the start of the meeting and we just got into our battle rhythm, so I apologize for that. Is there any way, is it too late at this point?
I don't think so.
Is it too late? So I apologize. I would like to move to excuse Rebecca. My apologies for being so late. She did reach out to me and she did mention that she had some other work obligations where she wasn't here locally, so.
Okay, motion to excuse Ms. Rebecca Dean due to her work commitment. Thank you. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Vice President Dean. Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any other business? Okay, motion to adjourn. Moved by the mayor and seconded by Councilman Branham. Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.